So this is the first meeting of the year for Planning Commission, so we haven't yet selected a Chair and Vice Chair, so I'll just kick off the meeting at 6:00 PM. Ms. Fetters, can you please call roll?
A.J. Mintel. David Cash. Gabriel Shauleen. Nancy Griffith.
Here.
Roger Daniel.
Here.
Will Parsons.
Here.
And the Middletown School District's School Board Appointee.
All right, if everyone could please rise, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, so first on your guys' agenda is your Planning Commission elections and appointments. For starting off, we need our Planning Commission to elect a Chairperson and a Vice Chairperson of Planning Commission. I know that staff has advised that maybe you guys might want to wait until you have a full commission in front of you to do that election. But deferring to you guys.
Yeah.
The thing is tonight, it has to be 4-0 on everything, because that's your earlier quorum, so we all have to agree.
So just one quick clarification, for administrative tasks, you can just have a majority of the quorum, so as far as electing someone, appointing someone to ADRB, BZA, that can be done with just three of you. But that is a good reminder, for anyone who has a case on the agenda, you're going to need an affirmative vote in favor of all of the Planning Commission members who are here tonight, because we do need four to take any formal action on an application. So to the extent that you want to continue your application for another meeting when you'll have more members to choose from or to render a decision, that's totally up to you, and feel free to say that on the record when you get up here, but completely applicant's decision in that regard.
All right, so we're going to move on. Do you guys, well first, do you guys want to wait until you have a full commission?
I think waiting is appropriate.
All right, and do you guys want to wait for also your appointees?
For the ARB.
ARB, you have one Board of Zoning Appeal Appointee and one Historic Commission Appointee.
I think if we're going to wait, we may as well wait for that as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I might as well just get it all done in one swoop.
So just a heads up, we're going to have a Board of Zoning Appeals meeting and a Historic Commission meeting before you guys meet again. So...
In that case, maybe we should go ahead and do that then.
All right, and then I'll let you guys, you know, discuss the Board of Zoning Appeals Appointee. I think in the past, it was Todd Moore, who was your appointment for Board of Zoning Appeals?
Well, I mean, I can volunteer for that. Is that allowed volunteering?
I'll nominate A.J. Mintel.
Yeah, hot dog.
All right, and then we'll go ahead and vote on that. Mr. Mintel?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
All right, moving on to your Historic Commission Appointee, I believe, is that...
I've been on the Historic Commission for a number of years now, and I would like to continue.
Make that nomination then.
I'll second that.
All right, Mr. Mintel?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
All right. And then as for the other administrative item, your meeting minutes are not in front of you, they're not done, and I justify that as you had an 86-page packet, so no need to make it any longer. So those will be before you at the February meeting, in addition to tonight's meeting minutes. All right, the first case before you is going to be a public hearing for preliminary development plan and map amendment. This will be Planning Commission Case Number 125, as for a Wawa convenience store. The request is by Jonathan Walker of McBride-Dale Clarion on behalf of Troutman Dam's Commercial Real Estate for approval of a map amendment and preliminary development plan for a Wawa convenience store with food service and food sales to be constructed on the parcel known, listed above. The parcel is a total of 1.767 acres. With the proposal, the applicant requests waivers from the Middletown Development Code. Those waivers are listed there. The project will require approval by the City Council for the planned development, map amendment, zone change. For property background, the subject parcel is the former home to a CVS Pharmacy. The building on the property that is not currently in use was built in 2008 and has a total of 1,3,145 square feet, according to the Warren County Otters' website. The last sale date of the property was in September of 2020 for a purchase price of just over $3 million. The subject property is currently zoned BCH. The purpose of the BCH sub-district is to create an urban mixed-use core that serves as a vibrant hub of the BC District, encourage signature architecture and landscaping treatment in an urban pedestrian-scale environment through building height and building and parking lot placement and design. For staff analysis, the applicant proposes a planned unit development that will feature a Wawa convenience store with food service and food sales, following the demolition of the existing building. The footprint of the convenience store is proposed to be 6,372 square feet with a food service drive-up pickup window. There will not be an option to order food in the pickup lane. The food sale, or excuse me, the fuel sales will include six double-sided fuel dispensary islands with a canopy. The business will be in operation for 24 hours a day with approximately 40 employees. The driveways will remain in the same location as the existing driveways currently on the site. There's a lot of text here, a lot more in your packet. We're going to quickly go through it, but for starters, per the Middletown Development Code, Table 1204-3, convenience store's use type is a permitted use in the BCH zoning district. That use type is defined as a retail store that caters to the public where the sale of food items, such as hot or cold drinks, prepackaged foods, and tobacco, roadmaps, magazines, and other publications, automotive maintenance items such as brake fluid, oil, polishes, antifreeze, and similar products, and other retail items may be readily purchased. A convenience store does not sell gasoline or other fuel sales, or other fuels unless associated with a retail fuel sales use. Per the Middletown Development Code, the permitted uses table, retail fuel sales use type is a prohibited use in the BCH zoning district. Retail fuel sales is defined as an establishment that sells unleaded diesel, gasoline, and any other fuel used in vehicles. The applicant requests a waiver from the Middletown Development Code, Table 1204-3, to allow for a use in the planned development district. That is a prohibited use in the current zoning district, retail fuel sales. As for the planned development district, the zoning regulations, or the purpose statement, is listed there, like the purpose, but then the location applicability and review procedure is as follows. A planned development district may be established in any area of the city following review and approval of the plans in accordance with Section 122604, with all the other applicable sections of the code. The applicant must, or excuse me, the minimum site area for the planned development application shall be five acres, unless the applicant can demonstrate that the proposed project is of such a unique situation as to warrant review as a planned development rather through the zoning map amendment process or as a variance. The planned development process should not be used to address a non-conforming situation for the lot that will be used for a single building and/or use, use where the use is permitted but where such use does not comply with applicable standards. Such situations should be, first be considered for a variance application. For this one, the applicant requests a waiver from Middletown Development Code, Chapter 1204-7, Part B, Part 15, related to the size of a planned development district. The proposed development will be a total of 1.767 acres. For site development standards, the site development standards for the BCH sub-district are as follows. 217,800 minimum lot area square footage, 10-30-foot minimum front yard, and a maximum building height of 90 feet. The applicant requests a waiver from the minimum lot area in the BCH zoning district in the planned development district. The lot is approximately 76, just about 77,000 square feet in the total lot area, and then, so that would be 140,000 less than the minimum lot area size for a parcel in the BCH. As for accessory uses and structures, per the Middletown Development Code, Chapter 120601, Part D, Part 6, the types of accessory uses allowed in a planned development district shall be considered as part of the planned development review. Per the table you see, drive-through facilities are a conditional use if the drive-through windows, drive-through signage, or any audio equipment is located in the front yard in the BCH sub-district. The Middletown Development Code, Chapter 1230, defines a drive-through facility as an establishment that encourages or permits customers to receive services or obtain goods while remaining in their motor vehicles. The applicant requests a waiver to allow for a drive-through window to be located on the front facade of the building that faces Union Road. The subject parcel is a corner lot, lots that have street frontage on two intersecting streets. As for lighting, you can see the lighting standards, I know you guys were asking, or the applicant was asking if they're, they meet the criteria, and I think Part 3 of this, the applicant must provide a plan that identifies the location, height, and types of luminaries, and shows how the applicant intends to comply with the section, does not, I don't think you need a waiver for, for the lighting. And here is the proposed lighting plan. As for landscaping and buffering, a landscape plan will be required when a certificate of zoning compliance application is submitted. As for, per the Middletown Development Code, Chapter 121609, pedestrian amenities shall be required in the BC District and include outdoor pedestrian plazas with benches, outdoor dining, outdoor playground area, water features, clock towers, public art, or similar outdoor feature that provides an amenity and/or focal point for pedestrians. At least one square foot of pedestrian amenities per off-street parking space is required in the BCH sub-district. Pedestrian amenities should be placed in front of a building near the public sidewalk or near building entrances. Pedestrian amenities may be provided as an alternative to buffer requirements along arterial and foundation planting requirements are as follows, and I include this as there's not a landscaping plan provided, so this would be something they would have to meet in their landscaping plan. As for landscaping and buffering for the large waste receptacle, the screening requirements are as met, so there is not a waiver needed. For parking, the only waiver requested here by the applicant is to have only three stacking spaces measured from the first pickup window to the entrance of the drive-through, as shown in their location plan. For signage, all of their signage plans appear to me are review criteria. There is a total of, I believe, 16 signs proposed, including all the different dispensary, or the dispense, the fuel dispenser islands. For public notice, per the Middletown Development Code, Table 122601, notice requirements, public notice was published for at least 30 days, and mail notice was provided to all property owners within 200 feet of the property, at least 14 days before the initial public hearing. No public comments have been received at this time. The other department comments came from three different city departments, the first from City Management. The recommendation for this development is denial. The acreage is too small to meet the planned development acreage criteria. Is the utilization of the planned development district to spot-zone the property to allow for a use that is prohibited in the current zoning district. The comprehensive plan calls for other uses envisioned for the property. The Community and Economic Development Department stated the main concern is that retail fuel sales is not only a prohibited use, but the potential for the oversaturation of retail fuel establishments in the vicinity of the proposed site. Currently, there is a BP gas station on the northeast intersection of Commerce and State Route 122, approximately 650 feet from the subject property. Another gas station would have a negative impact on the future development and the future use of the BCH sub-district. As for Public Works and Engineering Department, it was stated at Tier 2 traffic study, per the city's manual of design for public improvements, is required. The boundary survey looks good, but there is no description with it. The utility plan does not show the proposed sanitary connection. The CVS has a lateral coming off of the access road to the west, so it is assumed that this is where the connection is planned. And lastly, the water lines in this area are under Warren County jurisdiction, so it is expected that their standards and the personnel be mentioned in the plans. Here is the Middletown Comprehensive Plan, Future Land Use Map. The future land use map indicates the property in question is located in the employment-mixed-use land use category, which is defined as primarily office, high-tech residential, medical, and other similar uses, with secondary uses that include commercial, service, and residential. Here is the applicant's, applications for the preliminary development plan and map amendment. The applicant's letter of intent, it's a little blurry on the screen, but in your staff packets, it's a little more clear. The convenience store floor plan. The proposed building elevations. The proposed fuel canopy and trash compound. The property in its current conditions. The zoning map. So based on the staff report provided, the staff recommends denial of the preliminary development plan and map amendment for a Wawa convenience store with food service and fuel sales to be constructed at 3445 Union Road. And here is your review criteria. And that will conclude my staff report.
Does the Commission have any questions for staff?
No, this is a pretty comprehensive breakdown.
Okay, so then we will bring up the applicant, and actually, anyone who's planning to give testimony tonight, we'll just swear everyone in at once. Anyone who, we can just do it for all the cases, really. If anyone wants to stand, just to get it done for any of the cases. Is anyone else here to talk on any of the cases tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to give tonight is true and accurate to the best of your information and belief? Thank you. And once you get to the podium, if you could just state your name, your address, it can be your residence or your business address, and confirm that you've been sworn in before you speak, that would be great for the record.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Woker, W-O-C-H-E-R. I'm a planner with McBride-Dale Clarion. My address is 5721 Dragon Way, Suite 300, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45227. My night, can you hear me? I can hear myself. I think we're on, okay. I can hear myself, yeah. Is that good? I can repeat my address if needed. So we are here requesting the zone map amendment. I have a couple people with me on my team. I have Eric Doms, who's with Troutman Doms, they're the commercial real estate developer. I believe he'll speak after me, give some background about the proposed purchase of this property. I also have two members of the Wawa team from Real Estate and Engineering, and they may chime in as well. I know your staff has done a pretty thorough job. Unfortunately, we have a recommendation of denial, so I'd like to go through this, and if you bear with me, I'd kind of like to walk you through. So some of this will be a little bit of what you've already heard, but I think it's a story worth telling, so. We're here asking for a zone change to PD with a preliminary development plan, and I think I want to say upfront, like, that our understanding is that we're changing the zoning, right? So we will no longer be BCH, and the standards of the BCH are relevant to look at, but those standards will no longer apply. You will be approving a planned district, and we will be zoned planned development. We'll get a zone change, and it's a map amendment, similar to what's happened across the street. So I bring that up because, you know, there's reference to waivers, and I believe that's to point out where we're inconsistent with the BCH, but we're not proposing to BCH anymore. We're asking to be PD planned development, because we need a zone change for the use. So I'll go through that. I'm going to go back, let me do this. Yeah, so here we are. So I mentioned I'm Jonathan Woker, I'm with McBride-Dale Clarion. I'm going from the bottom up, unfortunately. Klineger's Group is our engineer. Wawa will be the proposed user, and Troutman Doms is the real estate developer, and I've listed the proposed and existing zoning. It is a 1.8-acre parcel, so that parcel exists, and we're not creating it, that's the current boundaries of that site. So here is the site outline, you can see the surrounding development. To the west of us is the Kettering Health Hospital Development. To the south is a vacant parcel, and to the east is the developing Middletown Event Center. That's a multi-use track with, with pretty high intensity that's coming there. The existing is a vacant CVS building, so it's been there for, according to staff, about four or five years, about 14,000 square feet. Our building and our canopy is pretty much right where that building is located now. So as you see the plans we go through, you'll see that we're pretty much where the existing store is today. That's what we're proposing. And I think the other point I want to make with this aerial is that, and we basically have three frontages. So we've got Highway 122 to the north, a median road, right, that's got controlled access, multi-lanes, and then we've got Union Road to the east, also with a median controlled access. So the, the access is very well-defined, and as you'll see in our plans, we're keeping the driveways where they are. So we feel we've, we've fit very well within the traffic management component of your analysis and your criteria. The parcel to the right, that street, that's owned by the city of Middletown, so can't say for sure if that's a public street or not, but it's, it's owned by the city of Middletown and has been plowed, so I think that, that represents something. Here's our, our parcel boundary. This, again, shows the topography. We will address the comments that the city engineer requests about providing a description of the property at the appropriate time. I've also provided some street views, so you've seen these before. This is looking east. I think this is relevant, because I want to kind of point out our access, right? So we're a right-in, right-out today, and we're going to be a right-in, right-out tomorrow. There's a median in the road, so access is coming basically only from west to east. And you can also see the drive-through in this location. We're not going to be doing a lot of grading on the site, so there will be some grading where we, along the front, and some of the existing ornamentation there. Here's a view from the intersection of Union and Highway 122. Here's a view from that access road, and I think this gives a good perspective of the condition of the property. The dumpster is kind of right there next to the store and the drive-through. In this situation, the drive-through, I guess it's debatable whether it faces a street or not, and a drive-through is permitted, you just have to get a conditional use. And so what we're doing is we're asking for the drive pickup to be approved as part of this PD. If we were in the BCH district, we'd have to go through a conditional use process. So they are allowed, you just have to get approval for them to face a street. And then here's the last view I have, and again, I think this is important, there's a median in the road. You probably know there's road improvements that are approved and designed for the event center. We've incorporated those. The end result is that's still going to be a restricted driveway. So where you see our driveway on this slide, that's what we're going to use, and there will be, it'll be a right-in, right-out driveway as well. So I think that's important. Convenience stores are about access, right? So it's, it's important, and I think it's relevant that we're confident enough to locate here based on the traffic counts that you have, but also based on the development that's surrounding and that's coming our way. So, you know, a lot of times, my clients, and I work for a lot of convenience stores, they will need full access, you know, left-ins and left-outs. We're satisfactory with this layout, partially because there's an access road that, that comes around and will allow customers to go north on Union if needed. But in reality, what'll likely happen is this will be a way-home-from-work type of use, right? So it's a convenience store where people use the operation for convenience, and the food service is the same way. So, you know, the, the access is based on the, the traffic flow that, that we have on the site. Here's the plan, I know Ms. Fetters talked about that. I've got another zoom-in that's a little bit clearer. I want to point out a couple things. So our dumpster enclosure is at the bottom-left corner here. We have a pickup window on the Union side. Pickup window is a little bit different, and Ms. Fetters talked about that some in the staff report. We don't have a menu board, so that means we don't have a speaker system. It's an on-demand app program, so our customers will order food and their products on their app, and then they'll have a pickup time. And so what happens is they come to the window, and it's, it's ready for pickup. Why I'm emphasizing that is it's not quite the same as a drive-through, right? So we don't have stacking at the same level, because I can't just pull up and order. So if I, if I didn't do my, my pickup on the app, I'm going to pull into a parking space and walk in the store, right? So that creates a lower demand for the, the stacking. We also have a bypass lane. What's a little bit hard to see on this is there's a landscape island on the right side of that. Well, is this a pointer? I'm sorry, going back. It's not a pointer. So there's a landscape island to the right, we're going to have a decorative fence in that island, and then we're going to have landscaping. So it won't fully screen, so we're not trying to hide the drive pickup, but it will be landscaped, and, and we think it'll be an attractive feature, and I've got some views that show that. We've got 40 parking spaces. If you look on the right side of the slide, or at least, I'm sorry, the left side, to the west, that's where our future EV park charging will be, so electric vehicle, when it's appropriate, and Wawa works with vendors to decide the market and some other things. We're pre-planning for where that's going to be, so we've got locations planned for that on that west side, and we're showing eight spaces. And the front would be where the auto canopy would be. This is not designed for semi-trucks, you know, this will not be a truck fueling facility. We don't have the turning radiuses, we don't have the access for them, it's not for trucks. The fuel tanks will be located in that upper-right corner, so that's what that, those three large ovals are, so those will be underground fuel tanks, and obviously, they're near the dispensers. And I think the other point that's relevant, again, you can see the, the access points. So we're, we're within the same footprint as that vacant CVS. So I do want to talk a little bit about Wawa and provide you some information. I believe you had most of this in your packets, so I'll move through this as, as quickly as I can, but they're new to the market, and we think that it's a unique use in that it's highly driven by, by its food products. It's not what I'm used to, right? I'm from Ohio, I grew up in Cincinnati, and we're used to different types of convenience stores. This is a 6,300-square-foot store, it's highly driven by the food service, it's why we submitted the floor plan, and it's why we're submitting this information. They're not your typical gas station with fuel sales, they've got a really strong reputation of made-to-order food and, and their menu, and I want to talk about that a little bit. So it's just not this typical prototype. Here's some information on the history. They have started as a dairy, turned into a market, and really didn't become a fuel seller until the mid-'90s. So food and market have been their driving force for most of their history. They're very popular and prevalent on the mid-Atlantic coast, so Pennsylvania, Virginia, Delaware, New Jersey, Maryland, you've got more than 1,000 stores. They also have entered the Florida market for a number of years, you can see there are more than 250 stores there. They're growing into this market, you may have seen some of that on... You may have seen some of that on the news. So there are a couple of Wawa stores under construction and, and they're coming in to the market in Ohio, Kentucky and Indiana. They have a strong reputation of being a community partner. So I usually don't spend much time on this element of a convenience store, but, but they have committed to providing emergency services and supporting food banks and they support our first responders. That's a big part of what they do. And then in the lower corner, this is very unique. I usually don't have a slide like this. Wawa stores are very popular. They have almost a, a fan base and a cult following. People have birthdays there and weddings and they cater, you know, like I had to confirm that that's actually happening. Like you get catered food from, from Wawa because the people love the food and they typically in the middle there, you see a lot of times they shipping food overseas to veterans and, and military. And then my favorite is, you know, the Wawa tattoo, you know, there, people are fanatic about this. And, and I think it's worth noting some of that because it's not your typical situation that we have. So I'm going to breeze through this pretty quickly. You have this in your packet. It talks about their daily food sales. It's pretty substantial. At the bottom of the slide, this is about a $7 million investment. It's about 40 jobs that, that are employed here. They have company benefits. You can have 401K. You can have stock options and so on. So these are, these are company jobs that are, are well coveted and in the last 10 years, they've contributed more than $150 million to, to various charities, some of which are listed here, but they, they do strive to provide local charities and, and look forward to doing that here in Middletown. And then food. So this really is a, a food-driven situation. It's often called a, a restaurant with fuel sales because they are driven by, by the food and the products they sell are hoagies and sandwiches and coffee and smoothies and salads and burgers and chicken sandwiches and breakfast sandwiches and burritos and paninis and wraps and pizza and frozen and cold drinks and soups and baked goods and a whole list of those. So those are all made to order and, and you can do those on the kiosk at the store on the app and it's highly food-driven. And so I think it's important to understand that perception is a little different than what we might assign to, you know, a convenience store. There will be fuel and so that is part of what we're selling and, and that is part of our design and I'll show you some elevations of that. They do have, a pickup window is proposed here. They do have some curbside pickup and they've got delivery options with, with other, and again, the catering. So very unique situation that, that you don't often see in, in this market with a convenience store. So these are the elevations. So it's finished on all four sides. As you can see, we've got a combination of, of materials. It's brick composite siding, a lot of times called a hardy board. You've got tile and you've got stucco. I do want to point out the elevation, this is the elevation that I submitted. It does not show the pickup window. I apologize for that and we'll get that to, to staff. This does show the pickup window. So if you look at the bottom of the slide, excuse me, you can see the pickup window. It's actually kind of hard to distinguish between the two. I'm going to flip back. That's the non-pickup window option. And then again, if you look at the bottom, the pickup window option, not drastically different elevation-wise. Building materials are the same. Here's some, some renderings. This is not site-specific, but a good representation of that building and you can see the, the pickup window on the side. Another view of what the pickup window would, would look at. And again, views of the, the rear. Our floor plan, if, again, 6,300 square feet. The tan beiges in the middle, you know, that's about 1,200 square feet of the store is dedicated to food service. You know, that doesn't include the checkout and other things associated with it. So a lot of times, you know, the regular customers will come in the rear door because they're coming to the food and it's easier to get in and out. So, you know, it, it is highly driven by the, the food. This canopy is also unique. You know, you're not going to see a lot of canopies like this in, in our market so far. It's got a slanted roof, very low profile, so not a very high facia on that. It's taller in the rear towards the store and lower in the front. It would have stacked stone bases on the canopy columns and you can see the, the image. And also I know Ms. Fetter's talked about this, the, the dumpster enclosure. And it's this full masonry base. It's got eight foot, eight inch tall. So a lot of times you're trying to get developers to screen their, their trash enclosures. This is going to happen. You know, we've got a man door. We've got steel gates on the front, metal gates. So it's a high-quality design and we have the ability to put landscaping around that as well. And so this is the plan. I know this is a little hard to read, but I wanted to zoom out a little bit. We've incorporated the improvements that are shown for the Middletown Event Center. So that traffic study and the road plan improvement plans, we've evaluated and shown them on our plans. None of those change our plans, right? So all the improvements that are needed are within the right of way. We will do a tier-two traffic study like your city engineer has requested. We don't anticipate major improvements being needed, but that's why we'll do the study. This use is typically a trip capture. We capture trips that are already on the road. So we're not generating a lot of new traffic on the road. We do generate some turning movements, right? We generate people coming into our site, but typically you don't leave your house and say, "I'm going to Wawa." You, you leave and you go on your way and that's how the traffic is, is calculated. But again, I think this is important to see. And then it also illustrates the, the access road that's further to the south. So that'll align with Atrium Boulevard, which is the new street being built. That would be the only location that you can make a left turn out of the site. So again, this will be largely driven by traffic patterns on the road for that. Okay. Sometimes get ahead of my notes here. And this is a utility plan. I will admit this is preliminary. I saw on the staff report, we may not be identifying sanitary sewer as clearly as we should. We will obviously do that. There are sanitary and water services here. The, the CVS has those services and we will use those again. There's a dash box that shows we're going to have an underground stormwater detention area and then that will connect to existing storm services that the city has available. So we, we're confident about utility services and we'll definitely provide those details. And here's a little bit clearer view. You can see that box that I show on, on the left side of the screen. We're going to have some underground detention there and we'll meet your requirements. And then grading, you can see there's not a lot of grading proposed here. It's pretty much a flat site now. We're going to take advantage of that. It's part of what makes this an attractive site for this development. You know, that property is vacant now and we want to utilize that. Lighting, I'm not going to go into those details a lot. I think it's important to understand we'll have cutoff fixtures. That means it's not going to shine all over. We're going to just have our illumination downcast and we believe we can meet the city standards and I think we do already, but if, if not, we'll work with staff on, on those elements. But we have a, you know, photometric plan that, that we're ready to work with the city on. So I do want to address some of the comments from the staff and the report presentation. We do believe that this is an appropriate use for this location. We happen to feel that we actually meet your comprehensive plan. So what your comprehensive plan says, they envision Middletown. It says this area, the blue and, and that quadrant with the arrow pointing to it should be employment mixed use. And this is what employment mixed use says, primarily office, high-tech industrial, medical. And then it says, and other similar uses with secondary uses that include commercial, service and residential. We're commercial and we're service. And we're that secondary use that we think fits this. We cannot change the size of this property. You know, it's a 1.7, 1.8 acre parcel. This parcel will never be a large, high-tech industrial facility. It's a retail use today, right? It's a, well, it was. It was a conveni-, a pharmacy with drive-through. So we think that we do comply with the, the comprehensive plan and that we meet those standards. And we think that the 40 jobs that are proposed will complement the, the city. We, we also think that the quality of food we are providing will be a benefit to what's happening and what's existing. So to the existing hospital, to our neighbor Kettering Health. We have spoke to them. They are aware of our proposed development and support our use. They've indicated that they think that their employees would benefit from the food options that we're talking about and, and they're excited to see redevelopment of that vacant CVS. And we also believe that it's an appropriate use given the scale of the event center that's happening to the, to the east. So I don't think you can pretend like nothing's happening here. You know, this is, you're about to see a lot of development over there, right? You've approved a major event center with commercial and with multifamily. And we think that the right thing to do is to approve this use at this property instead of keeping it as a vacant CVS that could be a, you know, Halloween store or auto parts store. That would be less than what we're proposing by a lot. Staff report talks about oversaturation. I've highlighted our site. There is a BP across the street. In our business, access is important. I spent some time talking about that. There's a median in 122, right? So there's a BP about 650 feet on the other side of the street, which is primarily going to get westbound traffic. And then the other fuel is located on Kroger off of Time Boulevard. So I just don't see the oversaturation that's being talked about. You know, I think that we would be a, an added compliment to this area for, for the reasons I just said, but I, I think, I think it's reasonable to look at, you know, what is surrounding and, and characterize this as a, a gas station corridor just isn't true. I started my presentation by talking about the planned development standards and I'm probably getting out on a limb a little bit because it's not my zoning code, but the way I understand it is, you know, you're going to, you're going to change the zoning of this. So you're approving this plan and this plan only. We're supposed to identify the uses that are allowed. We're asking for one use. It's going to be a, a convenience store with, with food and fuel. We were even comfortable calling it Wawa specifically. So comparison to waiver of the use table, I, I don't know if I, I don't know that I need that, but we're asking for the use that we're proposing. And if you approve this, that, that's all this will be. And the same with the size. So the BCH district, 2,000, 217,000 square feet, that's a five acre parcel. I can't do anything about that. I mean, my, my parcel's 1.6 acre, so I, you know, I, I'm going to build on the parcel that we have. And again, when you approve the PD, in my interpretation, you're creating those standards. You're creating the setbacks for this and the access for this and, and all the signage and everything else. So I understand the comparison to BCH, but we won't be BCH anymore. And to pretend like it's BCH across the street, it's a PD over on that side too. And I don't know why your zoning map doesn't show that, but you know, this, if you read that top paragraph, the city council took action to amend the zoning code from BCH to PD district. It's not an overlay. It's not attaching it. It's not BCH PD. You know, it's, it's been a zone change to that and that's what we are asking for too. And I think that's important because then you're not looking at spot zoning. We're a PD across the street from a major PD. And, and I think when you look at the development standards of BCH and the conditions that we have with a vacant CVS, that doesn't meet the lot size that you're, for five acres, I mean, a PD is the right way to go. The way to redevelop the site is to make us submit a site plan and say, "Live with this." You know, stick with this only. And if you don't build that, we'll have to come back to you and you'll have to prove something different. So if we, if we want to expand this store, we'll have to come back and you'll have to prove that. So the, the PD gives you a, a lot of control and, and I think it's actually a benefit and, and not a detriment to that. And here's that plan that I'm talking about across the, the way, just for reminder. So I mean, you've got multifamily and an event center, wide range of retail, including some fuel sales in that development. And so we think that this is an appropriate use that will complement what's going to happen there and that you're going to end up being proud of having a Wawa in this corridor that's going to kind of set the tone of the architecture and some other things for that. I know I've thrown a lot at you. I'm going to end with a quick review of the standards. So there are six or seven criteria that are in section 122604D1 and we think we meet that. We think that we are consistent with the comprehensive plan for that secondary commercial and service use. We think that this is necessary and desirable use based on the existing and changing conditions. You know, you've got existing medical that has a lack of, of food available. You've got a major development happening that would benefit from the services that we're talking about. We will not be detrimental to the current future uses. Actually, we think we'll be complimentary. So that's item C of your list that you're supposed to look at. And we think we promote the general welfare by redeveloping a vacant, empty building. You know, I know Mr. Doms is going to speak briefly on that, but there's a good chance that that building will sit for a long time and that this opportunity provides that change. And then the last two criteria, we're not aware of any adverse impacts to nature, environment or the, the services of the city. You know, we're going to actually utilize investment that you've already made to the roads, the water, the sewer. We're going to take advantage of that. We're not in greenfield. We're redeveloping. It's a good, wise choice. And then our access, that's the last criteria you should look at, is will the access be sufficient? And we're not changing driveways. We're going to live within the scope of the road improvements that are proposed for this major development. And, and we think that it's a good plan that fits very well within this location. So I'll close by saying, you know, this is a multimillion dollar development that'll revitalize this vacant property and we think we're a good fit. And I would ask for your recommendation for approval and I will try and answer questions if you have them. I appreciate you listening to me.
Yeah. This site is only maybe half a mile from the expressway?
That's probably right.
So what about your signage? Are you going to have big, tall signs that draw people off the expressway or?
No. So we're going to have a, a monument sign at the corner and that's proposed to be 10 feet tall, 62 square feet. We'll probably have a panel on the off-ramp. You know how they've got those blue signs? You know, that's a different department, so I'm speaking over my head a little bit, but they, they try and get on there. But no, we won't, we won't be having a high-rise sign. Well, I'll come up if you have more questions.
Good evening. My name's Eric Doms, Troutman Doms Commercial Real Estate, 2211 North Elston, Chicago, Illinois, 60614. I don't have a presentation, but I just wanted to give the courtesy of introducing myself and thanking you guys for your time, listened to our petition. Been a commercial developer for about 30 years. We are the contract purchaser of this property, the former and currently vacant CVS. Jonathan had mentioned that they still have quite a bit of term on their lease, 15 years. And so they and the existing property owner are not real motivated to, to do much here. And what we see with the typical CVSs are them being converted into a dollar store, which is restricted here by the REA. Auto parts store, although this one is, is too big seemingly for auto parts stores and then some of the seasonal sort of varietal stores. So if you have any questions about us as, as a developer or, you know, our structure, we will develop the property. We will be the landlord. We'll lease it to Wawa if, if our petition is approved. I can speak towards that. There's a couple of folks here from Wawa for other questions relating to store operations, employment, et cetera. So thank you for your time.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Patrick Warnament. I work for Wawa. We're at 260 West Baltimore Pike, Wawa, Pennsylvania, 19063. But I live right here in Butler County. So they covered everything really well. I just wanted to add a couple of things. Our company is an ESOP, so the Wood family that started the company about 200 years ago still owns about half the company and it is employee-owned, so the folks that work there have stock in. about half the company, and it is employee-owned, so the folks that work there have stock in the company, which is great. So they tend to stick around longer than most traditional convenience stores. We work really great adjacent to hospitals. The Children's Hospital in Philadelphia is a major, major charitable partner of ours that, we've got a care cart that folks volunteer to push around every day to give coffee and snacks to families of sick children and such. So with two hospitals right here, we think there's a lot of good opportunity there. And I think Jonathan covered, I mean, for employment center, we understand that's the point here, but for less than two acres to get 40 jobs of folks that can get ownership in the company, have health insurance, all the things you want. I mean, that's, I think about the most employment you could probably hope for here. And we don't franchise at all. I wanted to mention that. So we own and operate every store we have, so, and the folks there own part of it. So as far as cleanliness and, you know, taking care of the place, I think we do it about as good as anybody out there. And certainly happy to any other, answer any other questions about the company here. So thank you all.
Does the commission have any questions for the applicant's team right now?
No, I think it was a very comprehensive breakdown.
Does the applicant want to add anything at this time?
One question.
Okay. Are there any proponents that want to speak in favor of the application? Okay, seeing none. Any opponents to the application that want to speak?
I do have a question just procedurally. So you mentioned that there are four, and we would need to, for, for action. If there's less than four, does that still move forward? It just doesn't have a formal action? We won't get stuck here and wait? Or how does that work?
So if there are less than four votes in favor or in opposition to the application, then technically no action is taken, and the application would be continued to the next meeting? Okay, so if there's no more public comment, commission members don't have any more questions for the applicant's team, then we can close the public portion of the hearing and enter into deliberations.
So do you guys have any thoughts on this?
As far as the fuel goes, because I think that, I don't really think there's too much fuel stores in that neighborhood. We got one a quarter of a mile away, and then the Krogers may be a mile away, and there's nothing else for quite a ways.
That's correct.
Meyer down the road.
Myers, right. So, I mean, with, with the event center across the street, and we've, they did mention we've approved a couple of residential developments up on Union Road that people are going to have to get fuel for their, for their vehicles. So I don't really think there's too much fuel availability in the area. I'm kind of concerned about having such a small, you know, PD area. We've done a lot of PDs here, and I've never seen, I haven't seen one that's small. We've had some amendments to some that would be this size, but nothing, nothing else. So I'm concerned with the number of variances that you would have if it wasn't a PD, which I guess is why it's a PD. But anyway, those are my thoughts.
My thoughts are, if I were to think of one thing that Middletown does not need any more of, it's gas stations, personally. I do see the, the arguments being made with how close it is to like plant, like future development, and it being a strategic spot for that business model. However, I think that Middletown's future needs to move away from fossil fuels, personally. So I'm very conflicted on this particular one, because I do see that it's like a food-first establishment with fuel being kind of like a supplement. But especially if the city plans, I'm putting another gas station on that opposite corner with the new development. I just, I don't necessarily think that's the right direction for us to move in.
He, he did say that there was the possibility of charging stations as well, correct?
Yes, so Wawa is actually the number one Tesla charging partner in the entire United States. So the way it works, we set up those parking spaces and have a no-build area so they can put their infrastructure in very easily, and we run conduit for them, and then they come back in with their own application at such time that their business makes sense for it. But we've got, out of 1,000 stores, between 150 and 200 that actually have the units installed today.
I have a question for staff. Would it be possible to, first, can you pull up one of the slides that has like the, the map with the different zones on it? So with where this is, is located, would it be possible to reach, so the, the minimum square footage being the 217,000 approximately, is that feasible there if you use that whole lot? That's one thing I'm a little curious about. Is it possible to fit in with the requirements for the BCH? Do we know is that?
So that would be a non-conforming lot in terms of minimum lot?
Okay, so that is never going to technically really fit that?
Technically, yes. So they would be going to border zoning appeals for area, area and dimensional variance, yeah, A and D, to develop that lot, since it's too small to meet.
Like pretty much any applicant, then?
Well, if they were to tear down and want to redevelop, yes.
Sure. Which most likely, based on the type of thing that would go, unless you could build an office within a CVS, but now we're, you know, theorizing. Can I also ask, did, I don't know if this is, you know, pertinent, but getting more history, did the existing CVS, what sort of process did that go through with getting within? Was it still the same zone, the same way at that time?
So our, our code was updated in 2018. I would have to look at what the last district was and if boundaries changed since 2018.
I've said my piece.
I mean, I'll, I'll say for myself, I'm conflicted in that, I mean, I take staff recommendation very seriously, and I do, I, I see where, especially for me, for where city management is coming from, the fact that it is so much smaller there and kind of finding that, as you said, putting a little dot there rather than how the PD usually is. Where I'm conflicted, though, is it, it does, I mean, I appreciate the, the presentation and what was shared, and it does seem like having a Wawa could be of benefit to the city as an employer. I appreciate their, their practices and the way they shared of integration within the community. So that's where it's hard of, ideally, it sounds like it'd be great. It sounds like a really nice company. It's just hard of with, with trying to fit in with the actual plan, though, is where I'm at. Might I say, our generation is going to be the one that is going to have to figure out what to do with these gas stations as they age out and as that fuel type becomes less and, you know, less abundant and is phased out. So that's kind of where I'm coming from. I feel like we're already several decades overdue on that, and I don't want to create more of a mess for us to clean up in 50 years.
I think we're going to have gas for quite a while.
With the heavy nature of the coffee and food use, I mean, our business is a little different than a traditional convenience store in that regard. So the Tesla charging and, for what it's worth, our lease does require if, you know, the gas ever goes away or we leave or whatever, we are obligated to take the fuel tanks out of the ground and all that. So.
I did not know that.
Part of our lease agreement with the developer. So, but, you know, with the food, we do, we call them legacy stores. We do still have a handful on the East Coast that don't have fuel at all from, you know, the pre-1996 era, and they still are doing fine. So.
I kind of look, look at this a little bit like UDF.
They happen to have gas, but sell other stuff, yeah.
Yeah. But.
I would be saying the same thing if this were a UDF.
Pardon?
I would be saying the same thing if this were a UDF. Yeah, I've said my piece. I don't really have anything else to comment on here. So this is still like, I'm only a couple of meetings in on this. Where, what's the next step? Where do we move?
If no one else has any other comments, does anyone want to entertain a motion, either to recommend approval or denial of the application?
I'm pretty sure we're not going to be able to pass a motion.
I don't know, maybe.
Maybe. Okay, make up one.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
I would second it. You second it?
Yeah, I beat you to it.
All right, Mr. Mintel?
No.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons? Okay, so without four votes, that motion did not carry, obviously. Alternatively, you can place a motion out there to table this case until the next planning commission meeting, and you only need three people to agree with that, but I imagine you might have all four.
Yeah, let's do that.
I'll second the motion to table it.
Mr. Mintel?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
So just for the record, there's not going to be a new public notice about that meeting. That meeting is going to be held on February 12th at 6:00 PM in the same spot, council chambers. It's up to you all. If you want to ask for another continuance, you can ask the commission if they're willing to grant you another one, if you don't have a full board or you don't have at least five members, something like that. But we can play it by year. And you can always reach out to staff and see how many commission members have said that they'll be present for the meeting.
All right, moving along to the second case of the evening. This is a request by applicant Philip Brandon of Brandon Homes for approval of a final development plan to construct three condominium buildings consisting of nine units comprised of ranch-style and two-story units on a total of 1.0347 acres. The project received planning commission preliminary development plan approval on May 8th of 2024. For property background, 1980, the property was platted as a nine-unit condominium in part of the Emerald Green Condominiums. However, the property was never developed. The subject property, known as the parcel number listed, will feature a total of nine units comprised of six ranch-style units and three two-story units built in a total of three condominium buildings. The zoning district is R4P, the Plan Development District, effective August 1st of 2024, which includes a 30-foot front yard setback, 30-foot rear yard setback, 30-foot side yard setback between buildings, and 15,000 square foot lot per building. Buildings 1 and 2, as depicted in the final development plan, site plan, will feature the ranch-style building for a total of 985 square feet per unit in building 1, and 11, or 1,115 square feet per building in building 2. Building 3, as depicted on the final development plan, site plan, will feature a two-story building for a total of 1,327 square feet per unit. Each unit will include one enclosed parking space and one onsite parking space per unit. The individual drives will be 18 feet wide. For staff analysis, the ranch-style building, buildings 1 and 2, will feature a front facade composed of stone veneer and hardy board siding. The left, right, and back facades of the building will be composed of vinyl siding. And the final elevations are seen here. For the two-story building, building 3, will feature a front facade composed of stone veneer, hardy plank shake siding, and hardy board siding. The left, right, and back facades of the building will be composed of vinyl siding. For staff analysis, the final development plan for the villa's at Emerald Enclave appears to match the approved preliminary development plan. Here is your site plan, and here is your approved preliminary development plan. Also, your approved preliminary development Other department comments, the Community and Economic Development Department stated, based off of previous approvals in the final development plan, no further comments on the Brandon Homes development, other than it looks good to staff and staff believes this will be of benefit to the community in that it provides more housing stock and options. Staff recommendation, based on the staff report provided, staff recommends approval of the final development plan to construct three condominium buildings consisting of nine units on a total of 1.0347 acres. And here's your review criteria for a final development plan. And that will conclude my staff report, and the applicant is present.
So if the applicant wants to come up and speak to the commission?
Brandon, 1046 Summit Drive, Middletown, Ohio. I see a new face. Welcome to the team. I have been sworn in. You did ask me to confirm that.
Thank you.
So same development, New Year. Nothing has changed since we, we all got together and approved the preliminary development. I did want to call your attention, as you guys know, one of my big philosophies in development is community engagement. And so one of the things, I did have a chance after one of the meetings to talk to the head of the condo association, who I do know is present here today, around, there was some conversation around whether or not we want to do a vegetative buffer or an actual fence buffer. It seems it is, it is the preference, and if that's changed, you let me know, of the HOA to actually do a fence buffer. So that is shown here in that plan, which is the only change that we've made. So we're just following the progress, wanting to get this one approved and in action for the spring, get this thing off paper. Any questions?
Nope.
Thank you as always for your time.
Thank you. If there are any proponents for the application, please feel free to come up and speak. Not seeing anyone, so any opponents? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's my fault.
Hi, my name is Marsha Hughes, and I'm a board member of Emerald Green Condominiums. I thank you for addressing the privacy fence. We didn't know what they were going to do. But we do have an issue with calling it Emerald Green Enclave. Enclave is something that's similar, as in shrubbery, the buildings, how they look. That's what enclave means. It will not be an enclave. And we feel that calling it Emerald Enclave is going to confuse delivery drivers, because they know our area is Emerald Green. So my thoughts on this is why don't you call it Eaton Avenue Enclave or something if you want. But don't use our name. That's part of our name, which will be confusing to people. So the other issue that I have, and I talked to the mayor a while back. So the other issue that I have, and I talked to the mayor a while back, is the flooding on that property. There's an area of that field that does flood with heavy rain, and we know now how nature is crazy because of global warming. So if we have this problem with water on that field, what will be done to protect the properties around there? Because there are slopes. It slopes down towards Emerald Green. It slopes down to the apartments on Benita Drive, and it slopes to the land dominiums. So what will do, what will happen to contain this runoff? Because if eighty-five percent of this is hard, where's it gonna go? And I have another question. If you can only have two cars per unit, where are they gonna do when there's a party? Eaton Avenue, because of how the drives are, there is no parking. There is no parking on Eaton Avenue. And how would fire trucks get in and out? That's another question I have. I've thought about this. I've had plenty of time. And to have nine units and call it a condo association, we are an association of seventeen condos, and money can be tight because most of us are older people, and I'm one of the younger ones, and I'm sixty-six. So how would they maintain nine condos? What would their fee be? We don't have a company take over Emerald Green because we can't afford it. Our manager is Linda Sabo, and there's a few of us on the board to keep costs down. You know, the first seven years of the build, everything's gonna be hunky-dory, and then things are gonna start happening. So our main concern, will these turn into rental properties? We are saturated in this area with rental properties in section eight. And I've only got twelve to twenty years of life left, and I don't want any more section eight around me. I want a safe place. It's safe where we are. The privacy fence will help keep us safe because my biggest fear, because there won't be ample parking over there, is people would park on our property and walk across. Now, I didn't used to be afraid to go out and confront somebody at ten o'clock at night, and I had to a few weeks ago, and it scares me. And because I'm a law-abiding citizen, I can't carry my gun in my pocket, but I've thought about it. So where are these people going to park? And I really don't want to go out my front door. I have no trouble with the one-four plans, no trouble, but I really don't want to walk out my front door and look up in the sky and see somebody's bedroom, and that's exactly what's going to happen. There are not two-story homes around that area. Let's see. So what are your concerns with the parking there? Has that even been thought of? What's going to happen? If you have a party, you have three or four cars, right? Three or four extra, where are those cars gonna go? Because even though it's one point so many acres, you've got a lot of footage going downhill. So really, the build area is not that big. How will these cars even turn around in this area? Now, I appreciate Mr. Brandon saying about the privacy fence because we have to have that, but there hasn't really been any communication. There's been no meetings. I just don't be, see, having a two-story condo being cohesive to our area because it's not. And have the zoning laws been changed that you could put so much in such a little spot without forethought of parking or emergency vehicles? Because when I look at that, I can't even see a turnaround. And if only two cars are gonna fit, where are they gonna pull in? So take a good look at that. Like I said, we're all for, you know, building a few land dominiums or something there, but this is oversaturation. What if somebody buys that? A man and a woman have a car, and their teenager has a car? Where's that car gonna go? Where's grandma and grandpa's car gonna go when they come to visit? And if these become rentals, like so much of Middletown is, that's going to affect my value. So these are questions I have for you. Were you able to review an email you were sent on July twenty-second of twenty twenty-four with our concerns? You're, I think you're new.
I was not able to review that.
Okay. And the thing that gets, I'll tell you another thing. So I'm kind of like a clean person. I eat clean. I believe in nature and things. What gets me is, you say wildlife will not be affected. We have deer. I was, took my dog out at ten o'clock the other night, and two deers jumped out of the bush, scared me to death. We have raccoons. It's full of wildlife. But that's not a major concern for the city. But it's oversaturation with nine units. Six units, I could see that. There would not be over saturation. There'd be room for turnarounds or be extra parking for the owners. So I'd appreciate it if you'd look into these concerns because they're real. And just guarantee us that that privacy fence will be up, and I want to know what's gonna end up happening to the water with eighty-five percent of it becoming hardscape because there is an issue with water in that field. More towards the middle of the field towards Eaton is where there's a problem when there's heavy rain. It will sit three and a half inches high. And the only reason why I'm telling you this is because the mayor said I should let you know. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Just to really quickly kind of, oh, so sorry. I was just gonna, just for the record, kind of refocus the scope of our review tonight. So a lot of those issues that were mentioned were issues that were already vetted by the city, dealt with in earlier stages of the plan review process, so they're outside the scope of what we're dealing with tonight. Um, stormwater, parking, all of that has already been dealt with. So we're mostly just looking for consistency of the final development plan with the preliminary plan that's already been approved. Um, in terms of the name of the development, the city has no control over that.
You know, even though that's not what we're here to talk to, I do want to answer your questions. Um, as far as the name, we're, we're flexible on that. You know, if, if it's that much of a frustration point, um, certainly our marketing team can come up with something different. Um, as far as drainage, I, I think this is a big piece. Anytime we're doing a development, it, it's not fill in a room, putting together a plan. Uh, we have highly-paid professionals, engineering teams that look into these things to make sure, um, that we're not only doing right by all the surrounding area, but we're, we're doing right by the folks who will inhabit these condos. So from a drainage perspective, it's not shown, this is a very high-level plan, but it was submitted as a part of this package and reviewed by engineering, and we have had this discussion with Scott Tadic and his team, uh, who's the head of Public Works. Uh, there is a, uh, retention metering system that should help. Um, I'll call everybody's reminder to what was originally proposed for this. This was actually going to be ten condo units. Um, the only reason it's not is the original developer passed away before he could complete that. Um, with those ten units that were proposed, the stormwater was straight piped, so that was going straight into our stormwater system. Um, and so if you think you have a stormwater problem now, you would have really had one if the original plans would have went through. Um, however, with our proposal, we're actually making sure that we are, uh, being mindful of the stormwater situation, especially over in that area, because, um, there are known problems just in general that the city is working through, uh, Scott and his team. Um, as far as, uh, the condo association, um, there is not, not going to be a condo association. There's going to be a homeowners' association. These are land dominiums, uh, the distinction between condos and land dominiums. Condos, you own and are responsible for everything between your walls or in the inside of the walls. Landos are very different. Um, you are responsible for even the exterior under your roofline. And so we are not going to be, um, you know, really beholden to some of the same H O A. Requirements and funding requirements that a condo association is going to be required, uh, for that reason. Uh, parking, um, and Claire, you correct me if I'm misspeaking, but I'm pretty sure we exceed the code for this development. Is that right?
I would have to look up off-street, but I'm pretty sure since, or it's one family per.
That's right, and it's, so it's, it's, we have a one-car garage and then that drive, and so I'm pretty sure we're in excess of the code, but I don't want to speak out of school on that. The big thing here, too, is to remember the product type. Um, you know, one of the examples that, um, the gentlelady had, had described was a family, right? You know, these are really gonna be, you know, and that's why most of them are ranch, age-in-place product for folks. Um, you know, so as far as, they are three-bedroom products, so there is a possibility that we will get families that are coming in here, especially the price point. We have been super, super cautious to try to keep the design to a point to where we can start to touch a new part of, um, the population here in Middletown that's not being served currently by new construction. Um, so we very well could get families, and that's exactly why we slated in that two-story unit, and I'll talk about that a little bit more. However, the reality of it is, in those ranches, a lot of that, the parking should be sufficient, and there is off-street parking on Eaton. Um, this, the two-story design, uh, we do market studies for all of this. One of the big things that the market study, um, that we conducted said is that there is, as far as entry-level familial housing in Middletown, there's a real gap. And one of the big things when we decided to headquarter in Middletown is how are we solving the problem? Middletown is a, it has so much robust history, right? A lot of our, our housing stock is all around these, and I grew up in one of them, right? One of the steel houses on Minnesota Street. Um, they're functionally obsolete, right? So, uh, for my mother, what would she have, you know, what would she buy now if she was starting her family, um, at an entry level, right? That doesn't exist right now. New construction, um, even if you go to a production builder is starting in the mid-three hundreds. These, this product that we're talking about here is gonna be the mid-two hundreds. Um, so we're gonna be competing with existing housing stock, and we're really excited about the product and opportunity to do that. Um, you covered a lot here, so I'm trying to remember. I did want to just touch on the piece with rentals. I, I, I'm, I'm right there with you. Um, with the rental piece, I do think that this is a challenge that we are experiencing as a community. Um, unfortunately, I build the product. I don't govern it. And so, uh, people have their sovereignty when it comes to what they do with their property. Usually, new construction is cost-inhibitive for rentals. Um, another thing that we also have to be mindful of as well is if you're getting financing on a new construction condo or land dominium, there has to be a particular mix. The bank wants to see no more than fifty percent of those units are rentals. Um, and so a lot of times in an H O A., something like that might be written in. Again, we don't get into that. Um, we develop the asset and then sell that, and then the community is really allowed to make their own determination. And then lastly, um, the communication and outreach, I just wanted to, to kind of clarify that misnomer. Um, me and the gentlelady have probably talked four or five times, so, uh, I do think it is disingenuine to say that there hasn't been any outreach. I think that's the cornerstone of our strategy always is to make sure that we are talking to the folks, making sh- you know, this particular project in, in, um, particular, we have about six-figure worth of changes that were brought about by the community. Um, and we did it happily and proudly because that's a part of our strategy. So, um, you know, I think a lot of the concerns that we have talked through with this around, I, I understand, nobody wants to be buying new construction development, right? It's always not in my backyard, but, um, we have done our best to be good partners, um, to the surrounding area. So if there's any questions, of course, I'm here, I'm, I'm happy to answer them, but I did want to just clarify that. I know that's not why we're here tonight. Um, it's just to make sure everything's consistent, which it is, but I do think that it'll at least put you in mind, especially because I need a strike. So it'll put your, your mind at ease, but also more importantly, it'll put your mind at ease, and if there's any questions, you can reach us on our office line.
For parking requirements, real quick before you go, Mr. Horn, um, residential uses, um, two spaces per single-family, two-family or three-family dwellings are required off-street, and one point five spaces per dwelling unit for multifamily dwellings, um, are required.
I'll speak for this development. This development actually went through three preliminary before it went to city council. Um, then went through city council, and it's back to here. The reason why it's here, number one, is because it has done everything that it's supposed to do, meaning that staff, and our staff does not even bring it to you for the first preliminary without that checklist being checked, or they're gonna tell you denied. They check all the, the drawings for the preliminaries, and then they send out notices two hundred feet to every resident, and every resident can come up and speak as long as they got air in their lungs and they stay on point. That's what's called a public hearing. Mr. Philip, uh, Br- Brandon, Brandon Builders, um, they're also doing Roosevelt Ridge. They do a lot of quality homes here in Middletown, and they are concerned about making sure that the homes are qual- are quality, and also that we are fulfilling our need for density. Density that makes sense, because not everyone can afford a brand-new two-thousand square foot home. Some people have to start in condos. Some people have to start in land dominiums. This property sat for thirty years. It's, if you, I've walked the property myself. It is clean. It's not garbage. Uh, there's not garbage all over the place or anything like that. Uh, yes, it does meet up with the other, um, condos that are over off Eaton Road. The owner has paid their taxes, so this property is ripe for development. Um, as in for safety, again, our city planner would not greenlight anything that a firetruck cannot come in and come out of. I know we've had other conversations about other developments, but this one, it is one in, one out. Uh, we are not going to have a situation where it's going to be unsafe. And then lastly, about, um, just the development in itself. Here's the interesting fact that maybe no one's noticing or knows. They didn't have to do this. Uh, they're doing this, trying to do this owner-occupied if possible. They could have done this development as rentals and not asked for a P D., and none of us would have had any say-so. It would have went up to Larry Tuttle in the building department, three sets of drawings, stamped, moving on. So I applaud Philip Brandon with trying to, one, reach out to the local folks and hear their needs, and is willing to build a fence, and, um, I think at one of the meetings, uh, some of the folks that live on Eaton, which they're used to that nice cul-de-sac. No one likes change at times, but times we need for the next generation, as I've always said, we're trying to build for the ten-year-old, the twenty-year-old, the thirty-year-old, and they want to live in Middletown just like everyone else. And they want, if they can't afford new, then they want to use our existing stock. So we need developments, we need developments that are going to be something that, uh, we can be proud of, and this property is ripe for development, and it has made all the hurdles, and it's at the last one. And this property is ripe for development and it has made all the hurdles and it's at the last one.
All right, is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor or against the application? All right, we'll close the public comment portion of the hearing and let planning commission deliberate on the final plan.
Um, I like everything that's going on here. Um, I'm a big advocate of density, especially um infill and sensible and community driven. Um, and uh, Mr. Brandon, you're from Middletown, you said? By Middletown, for Middletown, appeals to the younger generation. So I've got everything that I like in it.
We've gone through uh through this several times and it's a, it's a fine, it's a fine plan.
I have no further comments.
Yeah, me either.
Anyone want to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Mantel?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
All right, that moves us into the third case for the evening. This is a request by applicant Lakeisha Thomas of Key Better Days Society for conditional use approval to allow for fraternal charitable or service oriented club at thirteen forty-two Central Avenue. The property is zoned UCC Urban Core Central Sub District where fraternal charitable and service oriented club use type is considered a conditional use. Fraternal frat- yeah, excuse me, fraternal charitable and service oriented clubs is defined in chapter twelve thirty of the Middletown Development Code as a building or portion thereof or premises owned or operated by a corporation, association, or group of persons for a social, educational, religious, or recreational purpose, but not primarily for profit or to render a service which is customarily carried on as a business. Uh, for property background, the last documented use of the property, according to the city's records, was a personal service establishment specifically for a tattoo parlor in April of twenty twenty-three. The subject property is, already said that, currently zoned UCC. Um, the purpose of that district is to encourage, support, and enhance downtown Middletown as a mixed use, high intensity urban district and a center of retail, service, entertainment, office, government, and urban residence. The UCC subdistrict encourages pedestrian oriented retail or eating, drinking, entertainment establishments on the ground floor and residential on the upper floors of the building, but also allows service, office, institutional, and recreational uses. For staff analysis, the applicant proposes a dual use of the property. Uh, nursery, schools, or daycare centers, also children and adults, as well as the fraternal charitable and service oriented clubs use type. Uh, nursery, schools, or daycare centers, children or adults use type is a permitted use with use specific standards in the UCC zoning district. Fraternal charitable and service oriented clubs use type is a conditional use in the UCC zoning district. Um, I'm not going to read the definition for nursery um or daycare centers. And I already read the definition for fraternal charitable and service oriented clubs. Um, something I did want to call out is the use specific stands- standards, if it was a permitted with standards use, would be um accessory uses necessary to the operation of such use, such as clubhouses, restaurants, bars, swimming pools, and similar activities shall be permitted if they comply with applicable standards. However, such uses where conduct of business is a principal activity shall be prohibited. Here is table twelve oh four dash three. Um, per the Middletown Development Code, chapter twelve twenty-six, um table twelve twenty-six one, notice requirements. Public no- published notice was given ten days before the planning commission public hearing via the Journal News and written notice was provided to the applicant as well as all property owners contiguous and directly across the street or public right of way of the subject property. No comments have been received at this time. As for other department comments, um Community and Economic Development Department stated, additional detail on which services are to be offered by Ms. Thomas's organization, basic living assistance other than the after school programming is desired. Additionally, this type of development does not fit well into the current use and future uses of the UCC subdistrict. There are currently various bars, restaurants, and retail establishments in the immediate vicinity of the proposed site and after school care would likely not fit well into this. An alternative location ought to be discussed with Ms. Thomas as the city is working on projects in nearby neighborhoods that could be complemented by her organization and the services they offer. As for the Middletown Comprehensive Plan, the land use map indicates the property in question is located in the downtown planned land use category, which is defined as the downtown special area that is addressed by the downtown master plan. So it's a little vague. Um, here's a little bit more from the comprehensive plan. This is in the urban uh core district or development opportunities district. Um, specifically redevelopment will encourage community pride, enhance appreciation for the city's history, and contribute to the overall health of the community. Um, here is the plan themes and principles from the Middletown Downtown Strategic Plan. I couldn't find really anything specific that would call out um this property or kind of like future uses of the property. But the plan themes are live well, move safely, attract strategically, and grow smart with the specific plan principles. Here is the application and zoning applications submitted by the applicant. The surrounding areas. Um, as for staff recommendation based on the staff report provided, staff recommends a decision on this application be based on the future land use map of the comprehensive plan and the plan themes and principles of the Middletown Downtown Strategic Plan. Here's your review criteria for conditional use. Additional criteria and conditions, uh the time limit associated with a zoning permit, and the appeals. And that will conclude my staff report and the applicant is present.
Our organization is basically using.
Ma'am, real fast, sorry to interrupt. Can you just state your name and your business address and just confirm you've been sworn in?
I have been sworn in. Uh, my name is Lakeisha Thomas, um thirteen forty-two Central Avenue. Um, the organization will be using the location as stated for um after school programming for kids as well as basic living assistance for low income parents. So we'll provide them with, uh, we do like Christmas programming, um give backs to the community and things like that. So we'll be doing that along with the after school program.
Is there anything like for the fraternal charitable and service oriented club use type, what do you like have in mind for that?
Um, just for charitable is the giving back. We do, like I said, we provide them with no cost basic living assistance for parents.
Is there licensing requirements for this? Are you licensed at all at the state?
Uh, I mean, I have an, I'm a nonprofit, yes.
But there's not a license required for daycare?
Well, it's not a daycare, it's just an after school program.
And do you have any outside uh activities?
Yes, we do provide, well, not, well, we might take them on like a field trip or something like the kids, but no outside activities. But we're trying to do activities inside the building, recreational activities with the kids.
Nothing outside?
Nah. And we are aware of the outside environment, so no, the kid, we don't take them outside. We might take them other places, you know, like Gateway or Bowlin, something like that, but not outside.
And um, why this location? I'm only asking because in the staff um staff recommendations that uh it talks about um discussing alternative alternative locations. So like what uh what draws you to this one specifically?
Um, it wasn't no in particular, so I'm okay with relocating. That's perfectly fine. So it was just available.
I don't necessarily see too much of a conflict with um the after school activities and the um more adult things that go on in the downtown. It's a downtown, it's supposed to have a bunch of different things going on, so that's my take on that.
How many families do you serve?
Currently, we are seeing about eight families.
How would the uh children get there?
Um, we do provide them with transportation and sometimes the parents bring them.
And what are the the planned hours of of operation?
Um, eleven AM until five thirty PM. And it might run over till about six, you know, just trying to get the kids out the door and stuff. So like six PM is the latest. Monday through Friday.
So there really isn't that much of a conflict with more adult evening activities in the year?
Absolutely not.
I don't have any other questions to you guys? I don't think so.
Thank you. Is anyone here to provide public comment in opposition or in support of the application? Nope. Okay, so we can close the public comment portion of the hearing and enter into deliberations.
I have a problem that is on a busy street, you can have kids. There's no outside recreational facilities. It's directly across the street from one bar and one distillery. It just doesn't seem like appropriate place, in my opinion.
I don't see much of an issue with it personally, but that's the thing about personal opinions, I guess, so.
Come back, come back. Come in the front door because of that, so we're actually using the back entrance for them.
And there is a parking lot behind.
Yes, it's a real huge.
And Reynolds Avenue goes behind that too.
More convenient to be in the back anyway.
You rent the space, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And it's affordable?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you receive any subsidies, state, city, federal?
Um, I just got grants, but not from the city or state.
Okay.
Yeah, just local. It's very affordable.
Good, that's important. Do you know the um amount of single parent families you serve?
Overall, um now all of them are in the program, the after school program, so about two hundred here in Middletown.
Thank you again.
Any more thoughts? Well, um, does staff have any, anything they want to say? Any thoughts?
No, I just deferred to the future land use map um as well as a downtown plan on this one.
Can you pull that up again, please?
Which one?
First one you said, sorry.
Here's the future land use map.
And can you also show the um the second one as well? Thank you.
Well, this is also in the comprehensive plan. It's a little bit concerted development opportunities. Um, and then this is from the downtown strategic plan as for the themes and principles.
I I would, I I would agree with you, Roger. I think that um I like what uh the organization does and stands for and I would also agree with uh staff recommendation of perhaps looking for another more suitable location. It does seem like there would probably be, in my opinion, better ones in town for that.
But we have to remember, she's probably working fiscally and I had my business downtown forever because it was very affordable.
That's fair.
I like it.
We also have to consider that if we're moving forward with creating an urban center that's a variety of different types of businesses or organizations that are operating at different times throughout the day, there doesn't really seem to be a a much of an overlap with the, like, you know, who who's going to be going out and like really making a scene of themselves in front of the kids like in the middle of the day, you know? Like, just because it can happen, does it, we shouldn't, yeah, or that we should necessarily be, you know, like, uh, so prude about it, I guess.
Fair enough. I mean, I'll uh make a motion to approve then.
I'll second that.
Mr. Mantel?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
No.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
So that motion failed since all four commission members didn't agree. Um, does anyone want to make a motion to table this application until your next regular meeting?
I would make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Mantel?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
So this application is going to be reheard by planning commission, hopefully when more members are present at the February meeting and that's February twelfth at six PM, same spot, council chambers.
For old and new business, we'll start off with the continued um text amendment case from the last meeting. This is a request by um city council to change chapter twelve twenty-six oh one, part B, part two, to allow for count- city council to appoint all seven members of the planning commission and remove the membership of the voting member that is appointed by the Board of Education for the Middletown City School District. The text amendment also modifies the only city council can appoint a new member to a vacancy. The removal of twelve twenty-six oh one, part B, part two, part B, also results in update of the bulletin. Um, so what you see on the screen right there, the bolded text is all the texts that will be changed. Here's the text in its current um screenshot of the state. And then exhibit A in your staff packet shows the highlighted text um amendments that will be changed. Um, attachment A is the ordinance itself creating that um school board appointee back from nineteen fifty-nine, I believe. Attachment B, um it's blurry on the screen, but it's going to be the meeting minutes from, I believe, the two meetings where that ordinance was discussed and eventually passed. And then um exhibit C or attachment C is printed out at your seats. Um, when I was scanning the document in, I did not scan the backsides of each page, so you only had the odd number pages. So now you have all six pages in front of you. And then on the screen, you'll see your review criteria for the text amendment case. I do not make a staff recommendation for text amendments. So that will conclude my staff report.
Can I ask, was there any, um, I believe part of um having continuation to this meeting was to allow for conversation between city and schools? Is that something that'll be covered most likely um uh during the hearing or is that, is that be appropriate now to hear about if that has occurred?
Or is that, is that appropriate now to hear about if that has occurred and what occurred there?
I have a suggestion. Since there's only four of you, and I can wait, I'd prefer Mr. Cash to be back because he's our attorney, or your attorney on that side. And then we have Mr. Schindlin, who's new. And that gives the school district another 30 days to look for the addenda. This is the purpose of this, first of all, to speak this. Anytime the city council, which we voted 3 to 2 to send something to you, a text amendment, we're looking for your advice, your advisory board. So you could vote three noes, or four noes, I'm sorry, four noes, send it back to us. We're going to have a first reading, second reading, and then we're going to vote on it. Or you can send it as-is, four yeses, send it back to city council. Or you can send it with four yeses with addenda, which you've done before. But you don't have the addenda, maybe Mr. Cash does, maybe they'll bring it to you. But I think we should just table this until, and give you another 30 days, and then you guys can have a conversation. Now you have the comprehensive school compensation agreement, and you have everything else, so that gives another 30 days. I can wait, because it's going to go back to city council and it's going to get voted on. So that just gives them more time to deliberate and bring maybe some addenda to you for, because for the addenda, it has to be, it has to be voted yes with addenda. But this is going back to city council, so I would say you guys just, for conversation, just, let's go another 30 days, just table it one more time, and then maybe you can get to some more information. That's just a suggestion, as a member, not voting.
I agree with Mr. Horne, I value Mr. Cash's opinion on this due to his profession. So I will make a motion to table it.
I'll second it.
Mr. Mantel?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons? So we only need three of the four to pass an administrative motion, so technically that one did pass. So this will be tabled until the February 12th, maybe at 6:00 PM. All right, so going back to old and new business, I know Mr. Horne has new business, do you want to start?
Yep. So in December, I made the suggestion, or it's actually in the ordinance, that you guys give a report, which is not really fair to say in December, hey, we want a report. But again, I just thought it always happened. And I think the chairman said, well, we don't do reports. Well, I think we need a report, but I'm just going to remind you, like, at the beginning of the second quarter, the third quarter, the fourth quarter, so we just have a report. And I'm sure the report is just, you know, this is how many cases we did, this is what we saw and everything. And then the second thought is, is everyone kind of signed up here to be to 12 meetings a year. Like in September, I think we didn't have any cases. And this is just a suggestion, because I'll be here no matter what. But I would think that maybe you still have a meeting, and then maybe you review the meeting minutes, so you don't have to go two months. Because if you miss, if you had a meeting in August and don't come back until October, then you have to say, okay, I remember August, yeah, okay. Because you're supposed to, you know, say, I agree with the meeting minutes, and you vote on it. And then you can also have conversation about text amendments, because Mr. Moore sent a text amendment to city council for vote, it was his chart on cannabis. So I know it's like your time is valuable, and we appreciate that you volunteered to do this. And if you don't have to have a meeting, you have to have a meeting, but it's up to you if you want to do that. And you can have further conversation, maybe bring it back up in February about, hey, let's think about this at least. But I am going to continue to remind you every quarter about the report at the end of the year. And it doesn't have to be, you know, it just has to probably be, this is what happened over the last 12 months, and this is what we're going to do. So that's, that's my new business.
All right, so piggybacking off putting a bug in your ear, Planning Commission meeting time. So I don't know if you guys, and your schedule allows, to continue meeting at 6:00, or we can move it to 5:30. I know Board of Zoning Appeals meets at 5:30, City Council meets at 5:30, you guys meet at 6:00. Historic Commission meeting, meetings are at 6:00 as well. But we'll probably discuss that when we have a bit more of a full panel before us, but leaving that up to you guys.
I will say, 6:00 is kind of like the time that I worked out with my job to be here, because I normally work on Wednesdays. But I can figure something out, if it's in the best interest of everybody, to go for a different time.
Selfishly, this is, it gives me time to get home and help with my child before coming. And so my opinion's not going to change about preferring the 6:00, but yeah, if we want to discuss, we can. Not saying this is decided tonight, this is just pretty important, that's not going to change when it does get discussed.
I'll propose it again, and I welcome you guys to bring those items up. Because I don't know what's going on in your lives, so I just know that I get, I get you every Wednesday, or not every Wednesday, gosh. Could you imagine?
That escalated.
Once a month, on the Wednesday at 6:00 PM, I just wanted to check with you guys and see if that's still preferred.
Nothing's going on in my life, so.
That is not true.
He wants us to meet everybody.
Any day, anytime is fine.
All right, all right, well, that concludes all my old and new business, as well as everybody else's. Do you guys have any old and new business?
Nope.
No.
Close the meeting.
Thank you.